Thank you, TCTV. Good evening. Time is now six thirty PM. I'm Chairman Tim Toth. I'd like to call the executive, the Select Board Business Meeting to order on this fourteenth day of September twenty twenty-two. Would you all please rise me? Please rise and join me.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which stands my nation under God in the mistletoe with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Before we begin tonight's proceedings, I'd like to state for the record, not only being live streamed on TCTV, Cable Station Eight, and our YouTube web platform, but this evening's recording will be available for later viewing on our YouTube channel. We have the following board members, staff, and expected guests. And we do indeed have a quorum. The entire board is present. Mr. Bennett, Ms. Griffiths, Ms. Richard,
What's his name?
Mr. Curry and myself. I see we have a lot of folks in the audience tonight. Welcome. I I'm going to go around the room. I don't know all. I know most of the faces, so we'll start to my left. Let's just go around the room real quick. Introduce yourselves. Just speak loudly. The mics should be able to pick it up.
Gusto.
Oh, welcome.
Very welcome.
Welcome.
Candace Graves.
Do the front to the back. Sorry. Thank you, Candace.
Steve Banville. Laurel View. Richard Fodos. For Philly.
Sue Rerby, Lions Club, what type of the Lions?
Over this side. Then we'll ziggy ziggy zaggy back.
Lori Weida here for Edcom. CBA and whatever else comes up.
Okay.
Lori Mattson, Laurel View.
I'm heard here with the Feminina Against Historical Society.
Ryan Dangway, the Historical Society.
George Janus for the Knights of Columbus and Conservation Commission.
Karen Briermer Bloper, who are Laurel View and my husband William will be here soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Candace Graves for the Rec Department, the Rec Commission.
Thank you.
Charlie Webb.
Allison Hert, Laurel View.
Tony Sain, Laurel View.
Bob Sozak, DBW.
Cheryl Richardson, Trigger Collector. Leanne Royer, Assistant Office.
Justice Graves, Administrative Assistant with the Town Administrator.
Tadable Mountain Town Administrator.
And of course, our TCTV representatives. Thank you, folks. As always, the agenda for this evening has been set no later than forty-eight hours out by law and is publicly available at the official source for town information, TempletonMA.gov. Although I have discretion as the chairperson to add or remove from the agenda, it has been set to allow for time, personnel, resources, and public awareness. I reserve the right to move agenda items around to fit, best fit our business and our guests. Thank you. If it's your first time attending a select board meeting or any meeting of the public within the community, welcome. We're glad that you joined us. Please be aware that we do our best to address all agenda items adequately or public concerns with due concern and all comments with dignity and patience. We request you do your best to show the same respect. And I don't believe we have anybody joining us via Zoom this evening.
Mr. Chair, our account should be jumping on for the quarterly.
Okay. So in that said, a few Zoom Zoom rules of the road for those coming on and our accountant is aware, use the video whenever possible, although if you're waiting for the agenda item, it sometimes is better to have the videos off. Using the mute feature when not speaking, although TCTV can place any or all on mute, it's easier to control your own button. If you wish to speak, speak, raise your hand, use the raise hand feature or politely break in if you're using the telephone call-in. If you wish to see material shared on the screen, please request that of the chair, email, or refer to which documents. This will help everyone stay synchronized, also be helpful to the viewing public. Only the chair and TCTV have access to share content or screens. That said, we will step into our meeting proceedings. So we are at item number three, approval of the minutes of the prior meetings. And these are in your agenda packet.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Rice, I move to approve the minutes of August tenth, twenty twenty-two as presented.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second any discussion. Second call, any discussion? There are no call for discussion or corrections. I will bring this to the vote. Mr. Bennett, yes.
Ms. Griffiths? Yes. Yes.
Mr. Curry? Yes. And I vote yes as well. Thank you, team. We have no executive session minutes tonight. And we will be stepping into citizen input.
I had received a letter if someone was interested in having a candidate stay and it just is ongoing organization. We're getting a good response. It'll be October fifteenth from nine to eleven. So far it'll be, it's called Coffee with the Candidates and it's going to be at the Senior Center at sixteen Baldwin Drive. Unless it's gonna be big because its seating capacity over there is eighty-eight. So Mister Congressman McGovern can't make it, but so far we've got over seven responses. Candidate section. Senator Goby. The two, yeah. So please come out.
Thank you.
Is going to make public comments and remove any questions of impropriety or potential discussion they have. I'm going to pass the chair. You are actually going to refuse myself. Somebody just get me one to pass this part. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Liz.
Hi. Thank you. So I'm just gonna read this to keep me on target.
Okay, it's your notes. It's nothing. You've sent this already.
No.
Okay.
No. The the second page is, which you already have a copy of there.
Oh, yeah, I do. Thank you.
Okay. So while watching the previous select board meeting, I was very concerned about the possibility of the town deciding to move the Veteran Service Services responsibilities outside of our community and what that would mean to my veteran family members. I know it would not meet their needs. I am a wife of a disabled combat vet. I've watched him through the years with challenges to get proper services put in place and followed and have those services followed and moved from one veteran agent to another and to have to rebuild the relationships with each new person as it moves. Then the fear that set in when his personally identifiable information was lost in one of those moves. It it's out there someplace. Who knows where it is? Who knows who has access to it? I've also seen how other family members who are vets have different needs for different services. Both both are mostly homebound. I don't see how a resource base in another community would be able to address anything more than a clerical requirement. They wouldn't be coming to my my family members homes. In any case, if there's anyone that has any doubt, the importance to stress that the VSO Director of Veteran Services position is not a low-level clerical position. It's so much more than filling out forms, establishing benefits. It includes duties as diverse as counseling of veterans and their dependents, referrals to appropriate agencies or services, community outreach, organizations, and coordinating with memorial memorial activities, Veterans Memorials Day. I can just go on. Basically, it's so much more than just clerical work, and that's what was coming across in the last meeting. That they had need, they have an experiential knowledge that's needed. There's a need for the person to assist the vet that has walked a similar path. There is a need to be available to the veteran where they are the most comfortable. Vets come home, some vets come home whole and unscathed. Others do not. The VSO listens, guides, and supports in ways that only another vet can do. So I was fortunate enough a few years ago to be able to attend Massachusetts Municipal Association MMA Conference. One of the takeaways from that conference was was the, they encouraged cribbing from other organizations. And so what you have in front of the board there is two examples from other towns of basically job descriptions as to what a a a Director of Veteran Services is all about. So what the other sheet of paper is and is to, and I'm trying to keep, I'm trying to keep this short because you have a long and agenda. So there are three options with addressing veteran services needs. One is the regional agreement, which was already previously discussed. Continue with a part-time position or possibly can look at doing a full-time salary, non-hourly position. So what I'm asking the Select Board to do is to gather information needed to consider making the Director of Veteran Services a full-time position. If the board is open to considering, considering it to be a full-time position, I believe there's some things the board needs to find out. And what I'm asking the board is to try to find out those things to be able to make an informed decision as to how the board wishes to proceed. So can the money be found in the current fiscal year? And and if so, recommendations needed for moving the funding. And if if it needs to go in front of the advisory board, then to do so. And then also look at the draft full-time job description, which is already provided. So that's really my ask is for for the board to consider it.
Okay. You know, as a vet, I love living in Massachusetts that boasts the the best veteran services across the entire country, and that should flow right down to all three hundred and fifty-four communities. So I'm in agreeance with you. You've got some some great nuggets here for us to chew on. The the biggest place where we chew on these is during the budget season to actually flesh out those questions. So thank you for coming in and making that presentation tonight. Any any other quick thoughts?
Just one quick thought. At the last meeting, I think there was a misunderstanding or misinterpretation of the presentation. I I heard the words regionalization get tossed out there, and that was not in the idea or the I call it a fix, a temporary fix, and that's what it said. It said a temporary move to provide services for veterans in the absence of having someone currently here. It was put out to you could call the state. Well, I did that. I went to the state website. I filled out an email thing. I sent it in three weeks ago. I haven't heard squat back from them. I've called twice. We'll leave your number, blah blah. They started off with go to our webpage, find your town and your VSO. Well, I left the message. My town doesn't have one, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I was interested in benefits, this, that, and the other thing. I called twice. I have not heard nothing. So to me, that's not an option. Regionalization. We have done that. I believe it can work if you have the right person as the director. When I was the towns rep for our regional services and it didn't work because, in my opinion, this is me, as a veteran and as a member of that that board that oversaw that group, we didn't have the right individual there and veterans in all the communities that were in that Quavon Regional were not getting served. Period. I spoke in favor of looking at at it becoming a full-time position in Templeton. I put for thirty-eight hours. I'm one person. That's my thought. That's my thing that I would push for. Some people think there's not enough vets. There's not enough thing to justify that. I disagree with you all. So again, I I think the takeaway was we were going to regionalize and move it permanently outside of town, and that's not what was presented, and that's not what we were talking about doing. And I do want town to maintain a veterans agent. From my experience with a regional service, and I do thank you for coming in. That's
If I may.
I don't, well, it's not really designed for a back and forth. I was gonna finish on a on a good note. Number one, you came in for two things to explain why it needs to stay in the community. And then the second part was giving us, I I think, the good roadmap. I I didn't want it to turn into a discussion, but but if I
My only two cents is do we put it on the retreat or a future agenda? Excuse me. Could it be retreated?
We'll figure that out. I think the biggest, the biggest, the biggest part is budget season, like I talked about. That's where we have those discussions. So like I said, I I characterized it as nuggets to be able to carry through to say, these are the things that the community is looking for. So I'm well, I I I I really thank you for your presentation. I think you did a great job highlighting the issues and gave a lot of the background information. I'll give you, I'll give you a minute.
Okay, just just really quick.
Okay.
All right, was the 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 concern I had was, you know, Jeff has said that, you know, it wasn't brought forward as a regionalization. Yet the way things were put out for for
Right, it was a discussion. It was not anything.
It it's just the the whole way it went down was concerning, and I'll I'll leave it at that.
So the, I'll end on a good note. Hiring process, as you listened to the meeting, it was basically, we got, we have to, if we want to keep it here, we have to have the interest in it. We have, I believe, seven candidates for the hiring process. So I have a really good feeling that the first part of what you came here is gonna come to fruition.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you very much.
Public comment?
Hi, I'm
Hi, Candy, come on up. Oh, actually, um. Could you grab? Oh, no, Justice. Oh, he is. I'm sorry. I didn't. Out of here. It's that veteran stuff.
Can I wait for Tim?
Table like I can't hear out of that ear. I need to clarify real quick. Hi, Candy, I'm sorry. We're just waiting for Tim to come.
Oh, yeah.
So I can turn over my role back to him. Let's see what the Burger King. Wasn't feeling well.
Here he comes.
I thought she went to Burger King. Mr. Chair, I yield back.
Thank you. I was wanting to say. Is there any other?
Yes, Candy is.
Yeah. Hi, Candace Graves. I'm here to speak, I guess, as myself or maybe as the Rec Commission Commission. Saturday, the seventeenth, in the park. Starting at six thirty, we're gonna have a movie, the fall movie. The Lions Club with the Rec Department is going to put on a movie. We're doing Hocus Pocus. And we're gonna have the concession stand open. And it's cash only for the concession stand. Bring your blankets, your chairs. It's gonna be a fun night. We have a lady, a vendor that's gonna do off our tattoos. She's gonna have like a spooky little house, the type of thing. Pretty little princesses. So it's gonna be a fun night. It starts at six thirty. The movie will start when it gets dark out. Movie's Hocus Pocus. And the Rec Department is really excited to do this with the Lions Club this year.
Could you give the time and time and place again?
Yeah, it's Gilman Way in Baldwinville, and it'll start, we'll, we'll start doing stuff at six thirty with the concession stand open, so you can get your spot early. And then when it gets dark out, the movie will play Hocus Pocus.
Bring your bug spray just in case.
Yeah, well, it's been kind of cool, so hopefully the bugs will stay away. But should be a fun evening.
It was the last time.
Yeah.
It's a great movie.
Yeah, thank you.
Outstanding. This is great as we're coming out of our unprecedented sequence of events over the last two years, that we can start doing these public things again.
We gotta have fun.
Absolutely.
Have fun. Oh, it's free too.
That's part of, that's the absolute best part.
Yeah, that's the best part.
Any other new citizen input?
Mr. Jeff, I may make a quick note. Tomorrow, we're gonna start work on South Road beyond Farnsworth and French. They're gonna start reclaiming. They'll be out there probably for three days. And then following week, the Millian will start in between Victoria and the intersection. And the reclaim will be moving down towards the other side of town, the two twenty-five. Yeah, if I didn't be able to get through, you might have to, a little patient, it'll be slow going, but traffic will be directed through.
Very good. That's a long-awaited event. Thank you for that, Mr. Sozak. Any other citizen input? Hey, seeing none, we will move into item five, new business. This is a long one, Tane. We have no introductions of new employees this evening. We do not, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir.
Item five, meeting appointments. Agricultural Commission. Mr. Leclerc, Mr. Roddy. Cultural Council. Sally Waite, Recreation Commission, Andrea Figueroa Torres, and I apologize if I said that one wrong. Zoning Board of Appeals, Edwin Figueroa Torres. And I believe we have all the community interest forms in our packet.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rice.
I move to appoint the following to Agricultural Commission, Matthew Leclerc, a three-year term to expire on six thirty twenty twenty-five. Additionally, Timothy Rhodey, an expired for an unexpired term expiring on six thirty twenty twenty-three. For Cultural Council, Sally Waite, for a term of three years, expiring on June thirtieth twenty twenty-five. For Recreation Commission, and Andrea Figueroa Torres for the unexpired term, expiring June thirtieth twenty twenty-three. And finally, Zoning Board of Appeals, Edwin Figueroa Torres for the unexpired term, June thirtieth, expiring June thirtieth twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I second that.
Thank you. I have a duly made motion and a second. Any discussion?
Has anybody, I see Matt and the other, any other of the folks present?
Thank you to their volunteerism.
Yeah, thank you. Really looks nice to start filling some seats.
It does. And just for the, for the, for the comments for everybody, the the Cultural Council is one of our unique commissions and boards in the town. They have a prescribed seven-year window where they have to step off for a year, and then they can come back in. So there is a rolling vacancy that occurs, and I know they're always looking for help. Much the same as many of our other boards, councils, and commissions, and it's wonderful. It is absolutely wonderful to see people stepping up. So I will echo Mr. Richard's comment on that. Thank you for that. Any further discussion, team? Matt, anything you would like to say?
I, yeah, I just, I apologize for, it was an oversight on my end to not answer it, which is the reason why I was off. It came through my emails. I didn't look at it, and because I didn't answer the question, I was taken off the board. So that was a clear oversight on my end, but I just wanted to make sure that I'll, I'll, I'll do better next time and read, read my emails more often. My apologies. Yeah, it's well, what it was.
Sometimes life gets in the way. Mistakes get made. This is how we correct them and we move forward.
I didn't take the position lightly. I just, I just didn't read them.
No, I get it. No further questions or discussions. We'll bring this to a vote.
Mr. Bennett? No.
Ms. Griffiths?
Yes.
Ms. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes. And I vote yes. Let the record show for yay, one, nay.
Mr. Chair, just a a quick point of order. Just a cross question. Jeff, does it help if you want, if you want them broken out in the future, would that have helped you?
Yes, it would, but
Okay, okay. All right. We have done that before, Mr. Chair, so I I just want to head with that, but I think in the future, just to be a little bit more careful and give the board a little bit more ability to kind of target vote or whatever. So that's an oversight on my part. I'm glad we were able to fill those positions, but I apologize for that.
Okay. Do we have? For item C, Presentation, Quarterly Report of the FY twenty-two. You forced to find it.
I don't see her on yet.
See her on this again.
In the meantime, I think the rest of the funding seems to come off.
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah, that's sorry. Yeah.
I think they could start their reports and put the account which online.
Hers is the first in the packet. That's why I was Yep. Yeah.
Hello.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thanks. It's been a while, so I'm glad you didn't delay us because these are April, May, and June, nine answer reports. So I feel like it's been like six months, so.
We'll be back next month.
Yeah, we'll be back next week for our first quarter. In my office, annual election brought a new member to our board, Justice Graves. We retired Brad Latonin. Just want to thank Brad for his nine years of service and welcome Justice aboard. In May, we did. We had additional supplemental bills of over seventy-eight hundred dollars. That'll bring in new revenue to the town for the end of fiscal twenty-two. We finished processing statutory exemptions. And at the end of the year, we processed over a hundred and nine thousand dollars out of the overlay account for exemptions. So that's veterans, widows, over seventy, blind exemption. So that was a little bit more than we've had in the past, maybe like one or two thousand dollars. Motor vehicle bills continue to keep coming in. Two hundred and sixteen thousand went out on our fourth commitment. So if they've been coming up, and so far we've abated over eighteen thousand dollars worth of it. Community preservation funds were submitted to the state, and we are netting two hundred and twenty-seven plus thousand dollars for community, community preservation funds that came in this year, which is almost eighteen thousand more than last year. So that's good, too. Billing went out on time. It was transferred into the billing system the end of June. Bills went out July first for the first quarter for fiscal twenty-three. That was good. Building permits, just in this past quarter alone, there was over eighty-one permits that went out, which meant there was, to date, at the end of June, we had over a hundred and twenty-nine building permits. And I'll tell you now, that figure has skyrocketed just in the last probably three or four months, too. We're way up over two hundred for this year. With that being said, I've gone out and there's over seven new constructions. There's been a lot of plans for subdivisions still in town going on. So right now, those sit in my office till January, but paperwork is coming in, and I probably got about fifteen or twenty plans to split off in town again already. So very active, very busy, and Lori's Inspection Service Department in our office. Sue, my assistant's been going out and doing cyclical inspection. She is doing Templeton Center. It will take this year and probably into next year, which it should be done next year, and we're not due for our reval and cyclical inspection till twenty twenty-five. So we're gonna be ahead of the game in the office for that. Always a plus. That's good. You're always good to be on the good side of the state. I just did a semi-conference with them to find out where we stood for our revalue coming up, and we're right on the mark as far as everything that we should be doing to work towards that. So that's always good. Also, I did an informational meeting at the Senior Center in April for our senior work off. This year went great. I had over twenty-two applications. It was voted at town meeting. I can place twenty seniors in the program, so I have two like on standby in case something happens and they can't do it. So it's worked good. I've had people working in the apartment, the highway barn. In our office town hall, we've got a couple working here. The senior center's got about six or seven working over there. So it's a really good program. They work thirty-eight hours and get five hundred dollars off their taxes minus, you know, that they have to take off of it. So it's a good program, and hopefully next year it'll continue to be as good.
You have a lot of return.
A lot of
Turn participants?
Um, no, actually, the three, because for the last few years, I've only had two or three people working in it, and those three people didn't even apply this year. I don't know why, but we got a lot of new people. I I don't know if it was just getting more information out to people or what, but I mean, it's been a program we've had for probably six or seven years. You know, so it's very nice that we can utilize the seniors and get some work done too for it. So other than that, that's my office. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Let me to work off, senior work offs.
I have none. Just a comment, as always, a lot of work coming out of your office. We thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'm up. All right, and it's typical. We, bills go out for excise, sewer, and real estate. Demands go out, warrants go out. That's typical of a quarter. We mailed out demands on past due FY twenty-two property tax. In June, we had over five hundred and fifty past due accounts at that time. Are actually tax title add will go into paper tomorrow. We had, what did I tell you, sixty-eight? So those will be in out of the five fifty, so. Preliminaries were mailed, like Luanne said, at the end of June for the first and second quarter. The company we use to print our bills Preliminaries were mailed, like Luanne said, at the end of June for the first and second quarter. The company we use to print our bills is, is done. So I've been looking around, and we got a couple people, the people that actually did it, the whole group, they work for the Boston Globe, the whole group is starting their own company and doing the billing, so it's going to be the, we're going to go with them, they gave us the same quote. Um, I had one other quote, one person didn't reply, and they gave me the same price that we had prior. They know our bills, it's all the same people doing it, so a lot of towns are scrambling to try to find somebody, so we got in quick with them, and, um, they'll be able to do our bills going forward, so we're all set for the December, December bills. What's that?
Was it, did you see any cost savings?
No, not, it was exactly the same what we had, which we have, we had a good price.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, so.
The power of maintaining good working relationships.
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully. So hopefully they'll do well, that they, it shouldn't, the bill shouldn't change at all. It's the same people, so, um, I mean, eighty-six MLCs were prepared, I did a bunch of Vadar informational Zooms, and I attended the Cape Conference, and I completed the Assessor's One-on-One course. Took me a while doing it over a long span of time, but I did get through that, so.
Congratulations.
I got my little certificate, so.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah, exactly. I don't want to be in your world, let me tell you. And just all the collections that we had for the quarter are listed below. Um, we had over two hundred and seventy-five thousand in tax title we collected over the year, so we're doing pretty good in that aspect, getting some of these people off the list, and hopefully we'll continue with that. I only have a few left from twenty and about a dozen left from twenty-one. So I think I have eight left from, from twenty, and I started with seventy. So we're getting them off the list, we're getting there.
That's good.
Little by little. It's helping having Danielle in there full-time and being able to get to some of those projects, so it's been working good. That's it, unless everybody has any questions.
Well, Cheryl won't tutor her, and I will. She got certified for her treasure, uh, collectors. That's a big thing, yeah, we have to go schooling for it, so she's got her collector's side, and she's working on a treasurer's side.
Yeah, yeah, one year in on treasure.
Yeah, that's great, so.
Nice job, Cheryl.
Thank you.
And I see on the monitor, we have our accountant has also joined us via Zoom. Hello, Kelly.
Hi, my apologies for being late. I thought, I thought seven would be a closer time, but you all moved along fast tonight. So, the year, um, we closed really well this year, um, you know, the fourth quarter in my office is pretty quiet, it's just, you know, we're getting ready for the end of the year. Um, you know, I did meet when I was there with our DOR representative, we have a new one um, that has been assigned to us, because Deb Wagner's now, um, been promoted. Um, met with Jared, uh, Curtis, he is a wonderful guy, and worked with him through both with the free cash calculations um, and the certification this year, and it went very smoothly. Um, it was just, it was really great to have that one-on-one, you know, interaction with him. Um, his, he wanted to get to know us as the community, so he came out and met with Cheryl, uh, Luanne and myself, so. Um, and as Cheryl passed the test, um, again, I failed the test. Um, I, I don't test well, I, I don't know what else to do, but I'll just keep plugging along and trying. Um, so I'll strive again next year. Um, and then in, uh, June, you know, it's working with the departments and getting them, you know, their encumbrances and kind of staying on top of them, remembering that they need to keep track of that. Um, but, you know, we're very, very blessed that we have a good, stable department head group that we've had for a number of years now, so that, you know, they know, you know, they know what's expected and they're able to do that. Um, so in the expenditures, um, there were no significant expenditure issues to close out the year. Um, we did, uh, carry forward six hundred and seventy-five thousand in special articles. Um, and we had twenty-two thousand eight in, um, encumbered funds. Um, the special articles are, you know, moving along, there are some of them that we've, you know, gotten rid of this year that have been on the books for a while. But I'm hoping in this next year, you know, production of things will speed up a little bit of, you know, people that we've ordered things for, um, we can get bidding processes out, um, to get some projects completed. Um, so we'll see how this year goes with that. Um, the revenue for, um, the fiscal year, we were at a hundred and seven percent of what our budget was with the DOR approved. Um, so we did great this year. Um, I just, again, wanted to say to Cheryl, I mean, she collected, you know, two hundred and seventy-three thousand in tax title. I mean, that, that is amazing that, you know, she's been able to do that, and you know, it's been years since we've had those kind of numbers, um, in tax title, if ever. Um, so very much kudos to her on that. Um. The one thing that is a remaining, again, from the third quarter, is, um, the interest rates at Bartholomew with the investments. Um, you know, we took another big hit in the fourth quarter, wasn't as big as the third quarter, um. So I, I think we just kind of need to write it out just a little bit more, see, because it did rebound some in the fourth quarter. Need to look at it this quarter, and then, you know, Cheryl, we may have to sit down and discuss, you know, doing something different, um, with the money. So that's something, you know, but we are, we are looking at that and keeping an eye out for that.
It feels like it's, it feels like it's tracking to the market.
It is, it does. Yeah, it's, there's no place to put it right now, it's just.
Right.
It's not going to be different anywhere else.
Right.
Right, so. Um, but other than that, I mean, everything went great, um, the year is closed, the free cash is certified. Um, and we're ready for the fall town meeting.
Awesome. Yeah, I, I saw that Adam's already starting to claw it apart in giving the capital what their, their numbers are going to be, so thank you for doing that. Really appreciate the, the diligence on that.
Any additional questions or anything?
So Jeff was gonna, Jeff and I can talk about the six seventy-five.
Question answered already.
And, and we touched on it briefly, that third and fourth quarter hit on the investments that that is the market, and even though it sounds gloom, anybody who works with the market and has investments understands the short term, yeah, it looks horrible, but in the long term, when we average it out, it's not all that bad. It is a recoverable process, so don't panic.
Fortunately, it is.
Okay, thank you, team.
Thank you.
Again, Cheryl, thanks for all your diligence and hard work.
Thank you.
Take care. Be at the end of October.
Hi, Kelly. Enjoy the weather down there.
Yeah, it's, it's nice now. Bye.
Up next, action item D, Town Property Use Application, Motopalooza, by the Narragansett Historical Society.
Yeah, we'd like to have a annual car show on the Common this year, and, um, I don't know if anybody, I, I believe some of you have been to it in the past. Um, it's a very good fundraising event for us. Um, for those that aren't familiar with the Historical Society, we're a nonprofit, our sole purpose in life is to preserve, restore, and display town artifacts for visitors to come in that are interested in the town history. Um, we, we've done very well over the past with, um, finances and things, so we want to continue with that. And fundraising is pretty much a means, sole means of support with, um, some membership fees also, so, uh, we'd like to have this fundraising event. Um, I know, like I said, some of you have been to it, um, if you haven't, I encourage you to stop by, even on a Saturday afternoon, stop by, tour the building, if you haven't been through the building. It's an incredible, uh, display of artifacts, excuse me. So.
It's not just cars with motors, it's tractors, farm equipment.
Oh, yeah, we, we even had, uh, one year, we had a, a motor-driven washing machine.
Yeah.
An engine-driven washing machine from the thirties.
Yeah.
So that was, uh, that was incredible.
You know what? If we ever have a fix-it clinic in town, maybe we should hit up the Historical Society. I bet there's some people that could head, head up some groups of the, uh, for folks that want, have old things to be fixed. I know TCTV has some electronic equipment that set players and things that they're looking to.
Yeah, electronics, my, my, uh, trade was electronics, so I might be able to do something with that, and we, um, we just, that's what we deal in, is old stuff. And that, you know, what I always say is, you know, come to the museum, see what new old stuff we have. So.
Chair. I just, um, um, we've had this a bunch before, have the, has the police, has public safety seen it?
Um, I submitted the application and the site map to the police chief, the fire chief, um, the DPW director, sir. Um, board of health, I believe, was, um, was, uh, it was submitted to, or the application for the food permit was. Um, everybody is pretty much on board with that, and, um, the chief, the two chiefs, I went back and forth with the fire chief, literally had some additional questions, I answered those, and, uh, he got back to Holly stating that they were both all set, where that search is going to have four members of their team. The DPW is going to be bringing us either four tables and five rubbish barrels, or five tables and four rubbish barrels, I don't really know which is which, so.
So it's coordinated.
It's, yeah.
Well into your coordination. In your application, it does say, you, uh, will you have food vendors at your event? Your application does say no. Uh, but you've got health here to say.
That, yeah, that was an original, uh, check on that, because originally, uh, food was going to be taken care of by pros on the common. But they had, um, uh, say, staffing issues or something, where she can't take the time for, for that, and that was just very recent, that was, uh.
This week. Yeah, she's turning on her bakery art business, I think.
Yeah.
Twenty years' experience each in the food industry.
Okay.
That will be handling.
Yep, that, this section of the, I'm sorry. You're good. Uh, so this section is just making sure that if you do have it, that the help, uh, you know, that, that last question, permit obtained from, uh, uh, the health inspector. We're on track for that.
You're on track.
Yeah, Lori and I have been emailing back and forth, and, and Lori and Brian have been emailing back and forth, so, uh.
That's all.
That's moving forward.
And, and, and we have the check off no for any alcohol service, same thing, because that would follow under the Amy's.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, uh, go down that road.
There's a still in the woods.
Don't say weird.
Um, Tom, actually, could you announce the date and the time of this event, so that the public that's watching tonight will be well aware?
Yeah, the date's going to be Sunday, September twenty-fifth, and the time is, I believe, eleven AM to four PM. And it'll be on Templeton Common.
Thank you.
Um, admission's free, we, we always ask for donations if somebody wants to donate, but the admission's free. And, uh, we'll be having food and, and soda or water at the event also, and there'll be music, Boot Hill Express will be playing on the bandstand.
Great. Do you have a whole list of, uh, people that are showing, or is it still open?
Um, that I believe is still kind of open, and we just, you know, we go to different car shows, hand out little flyers, so it's kind of on the fly. People see the flyer, say, oh, I want to go to that, and then just show up. So hopefully we'll have, um, a good amount, but not so many that we can't pack, so. No, we always want a good showing, but sometimes if you have too many.
Very good. For those who haven't been to the Historical Society recently, I will give them a plug. Go and take a look, because they're moving some things around and changing the displays. It might not be what you saw the last time you were there, that's a good thing. So my, that begs my next question, where do you store it all?
And you've been to the Historical Society, you, you kind of see how much crap there for room, and that's why, that's one of the reasons we want to get the Grange Hall finished, because we want to set up, uh, display cases over there and kind of open up our main building a little bit more. For easier walking through and seeing things.
And that's a project that's been a long time coming, and I know we're getting it close to the.
We're getting very close, yep.
Any other questions, Mr. Heard?
Just, just one thing, uh, I was wondering, the book that you and Harry wrote.
Images of America.
Is that still available?
Yes, yep.
A lot of local stores like mine and Gardner, and it's also, uh, at Kitchen Garden and uh, pros on the common, but we celebrate there at the museum, and a hundred percent of the money goes to the museum.
That's, yeah, that's, it's really, really interesting book on the history of Templeton, it's, uh, it's a pretty cool thing.
It's, it's got a lot of cool pictures in it from old, um, older buildings that no longer exist, and and folks that were from town. Um, a lot of folks don't know that John Boynton, who started WPI, was tin shop, was in the Grange Hall, is where the Grange Hall was. The Grange actually bought it from the estate.
Just dawned on me, I didn't plan this at all, but I had found this up where I volunteer, and I was going to give it to Adam, but see if we could put it in town on. Northview of Templeton Common, Central Park, eighteen thirty-six, Templeton scene reprint. It was put together by, uh, Historical Inc., okay, Gleason, Almas. You guys have one of those?
I think we got a few, like, but I don't know about that one.
Look at it. It's going to see if we could put it up here. A little rough shape, I think, but effort to come across it.
Mr. Chair. I move to approve the Town Property Use Event Application for the Seventh Annual Motopalooza as presented for September twenty-fifth from eleven to four, with setup at nine o'clock, subject to the town receiving a standard iss- issuing certificate from Narragansett uh, Historical Society and the Health Department.
Thank you.
Alright, there's the second, and Mr. Chair, I want to make a public disclosure that I am a life member of the Narragansett Historical Society.
That will also publicly disclose, I remember as well.
As everybody should be, living in town. Applications are available at the building and probably Tangwe Jewelers. And if you go to Tangwe Jewelers, you probably get asked.
He doesn't have a card for us to show.
I know, we should have brought some applications. I think I was trying to get prepared for the, for the public display of my presentation.
Thank you, Tom.
Any further questions, please? Good discussion, some good cross-information and roll of information. Now bring this to the vote, Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Ms. Griffiths.
Yes.
Ms. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Curry.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Look, have a good, successful event, gentlemen.
Item five E, Knights of Columbus, the Boot Drive, Mr. Andrews.
Good evening, I'm representing the Knights of Columbus, uh, twenty-five thirty-six in Otter River. We've done our annual, um, what they call a boot drive, or Tussie Road Drive, now for over thirty years up in the common area. And we are asking to be able to do it again on the eighth of October, uh, from eight AM to twelve noon. Uh, we only take care of the five intersections up there. And we don't do the, uh, one-way street at, behind the school, we don't use that area there, that, we don't go down there. And, uh, then we do the churches on, uh, Saturday afternoon and Sunday. And, uh, we're there for the handicapped, uh, kids and stuff, and, uh, we're just asking for permission. We've already got the chief's permission to do it, and we're just asking if you're okay.
Mr. Chair. I move to approve the Town Property Use Application for the Knights of Columbus Boot Drive as presented for October eighth times, uh, given in the presentation.
Second.
If a motion, a second. Any comments or discussion?
Do we need more information, Justice? Do we need a plot, a plan, or a insurance, or anything?
These boot drives are different, they don't, they don't need the same thing, even though we're voting for it as town use, it doesn't have the same, um, restrictions. And basically, uh, if you. These boot drives are different. They don't, they don't need the same thing, even though we're voting for it as town use, it doesn't have the same, um, restrictions and basically, uh, if you do the application, cause it's public by.
And what, what, what we do, we will sign the papers as the people come to do their working. And we will get some of them done before, this. The Tuesday before at our next meetings and then we'll get them back into Harley at that after they're done.
Okay, thank you.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? We'll call for the vote, Mister Bennett?
Yes.
Miss Griffiths?
Yes.
Mister Richard?
Yes.
Mister Curry?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Good luck.
Have a great day.
Thank you very much.
George.
Up next, the hen house common victolar license. Did I say that correctly?
You're really close.
I know we've come back and forth on.
Everybody's. Biddles. Yeah. I'll say it again, Lori.
Victulars.
Victular, okay. Anyone here from? And? Okay. What license, licenses they have there? Okay.
So I did see on the license, Lori, perhaps you can answer for us, the building permit and the occupancy permit were not required because the prior ones were still in.
I can also tell you that there was a little confusion when. They first went in, Holly and I would go back and forth about who was gonna do the. Bring all the paperwork, so. From now on, I will supply with the food permit renewals. The application for the common victulars. And that way, because. As a team.
Oh.
So this is a catch up.
Okay.
Great.
Very good.
Thank you for that.
Mister Chair.
Mister Weiss.
I move to approve the common victular license for the hen house as presented pending all fees, taxes are paid to date and all required inspections are complete.
Second to that motion.
I have a motion and a second for the common victular license. Any further discussions? Hearing none, bring it to the vote.
Yes.
Mister Griffiths?
Yes.
Mister Richard?
Yes.
Mister Curry?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Action item G, police local one five five union contract. I believe our town administrator had, will present on this one.
Thank you, Mister Chair, members of the board. This is our last outstanding collective bargaining agreement that we need to settle. Uh, this will run. From July one, twenty twenty two to June thirty, twenty twenty five. It's a three year contract with their full time police officers. Uh, they calls for. Fiscal, each of the fiscal years, first year will be two percent. Falling year will be three point seven five percent. And the year thereafter will be four point two five percent. Please keep in mind that this is this union took zeros for years, um. This is probably one of the better contracts that they've received, uh, throughout, but they were also, uh, very, it worked well with the town and I think it's pretty fair. Um. The, the personal days went down to three, uh, which is reflective in our policies. In addition to that, they, uh, struck their clothing allowance direct payout as well. Um, so it's, it's a pretty fair contract. Uh, the police are very, uh, happy, uh, and this is just the final step. They've ratified. And once this board approves this this evening, um, they'll be all set and we'll have all our collective bargaining agreements all settled. I think it's a good thing, um. And the, the, the process went fairly well. Thank you.
Thank you for that. A few. Few days going through this one, make sure I was digesting it and understanding it correctly. Anybody else on the team have any comments or questions of TA?
No, I know what a. PIA, this process can be, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes. Thank you for, thank you for where you, where you got us.
Appreciate it.
Now, Mister Chair.
Mister Weiss.
I move to approve the agreement between the town of Templeton and Templeton Police Local one fifty five Massachusetts Coalition of Police. AFL CIO for July one, twenty twenty two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five as presented and for the board to sign.
Second to that motion.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. For the local contract to be presented and signed. Any further discussions, team? Hearing none, we'll vote, Mister Bennett?
Yes.
Miss Griffiths?
Yes.
Mister Richard?
Yes.
Mister Curry?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Justice will have the copy to sign before we all depart this evening.
Yes.
Outstanding, thank you. Here's the pain part, here's the pain. Item five H hotel budget amendment twenty twenty three dash two.
Mister Chair, this is the finance component, um, for their pay raises so they could be retroactive to July one. And, uh, then we can get those processed. For the two percent for fiscal year.
Yep.
First year.
Mister Chair.
Mister Weiss.
I move to approve the budget amendment twenty twenty three dash two as presented for the transfer of twenty three thousand nine hundred and five dollars. From the select board intergovernmental account to the, uh, number one account department account listed in for the chair to sign.
Second to that motion. Ouch.
Yes.
The one thousand account.
Motion duly made and seconded. For the budget amendment. Transfer for the department as listed. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, we'll bring this to the vote, Mister Bennett?
Yes.
Miss Griffiths?
Yes.
Mister Richard?
Yes.
Mister Curry?
Yes, I vote yes as well.
Thank you, Tim. Item number two, heating oil contract award.
Yes, that's me, huh?
Mister Chair, we had the bid opening, uh, Mister Sozik attended, he was, uh, really stressed out from the sealed bids. But I think. I think he'll take it from here.
So the, the, we ordered to, while we didn't want to, depends on your approval tonight, but the lowest bidder. Was Freda Selly oil out of Lamista. And a locked in price of four oh nine per gallon. And between last year and this year. Is, but if we don't, if we burn the same amount, uh, we're looking about a five or six thousand dollar difference. From last year. They will be, um, to set up for automatic delivery. Um, I'm sure I'll go to the site so they get familiar. They do have a copy of the. All the buildings and tank sizes. Um. So I'm looking to award that. So we can, uh, start getting eaten on. Very good. That's actually the second. Bid that we did, cause I did one with, um. Estate as well, but it was no lock in price, it's a market price.
Right.
And guarantee not to go up so much. So then I talked to Adam and we rebid it out as Templeton by itself and. We had a few inquiries and Freda Selly was the cheapest.
Obviously saying estimated five grand, five grand up.
Yeah. It'll be, it's gonna cost us, if we stayed same amount of usage. From last year, there's gonna be five to six thousand dollar deficit between the two.
But I can't further add, between the administrative order and then the weatherization work that we're gonna have going on, we're hopeful that we could, um, keep, keep that flat. But Bob's been keeping an eye on it.
Yeah, so keep the furnace down, everybody that's listening.
Buy a sweater.
And.
Flashing on the windows, Bob.
Seeing center, it's. It's been up.
We're up.
So he's up, so we're gonna be monitoring them and gonna have a tight winter. Hopefully we have a mild winter.
Bob, uh, Bob, quick question, uh, the difference between market rate, which could be, which could fluctuate based on what's going on. Versus a lock in, it was, it's basically we're deciding, let, let's go with the lock in as a, an insurance rep from the market rate function.
Correct, the market can go up or down. And. That changes, it can change day to day.
Yeah.
Week to week.
Um, we don't wanna gamble on the, the, the trend.
There'll be a lot of monitoring and, um, and then, yeah, if it goes down, but all the tanks are full, what are you gonna do?
Right.
You know.
Right.
It's gonna be automatic delivery in, uh. I think overall, from what I hear from others, I think Templeton did pretty well at the four oh nine.
Uh, I'm familiar with the company in terms, I know that you wrestled with responsiveness in the past. Um, I've been a customer of Freda Selly.
Freda Selly.
Fred, Freda Selly. I like Charlie. But Freda Selly, I've been a customer and, um, they've been very responsive. I, uh, it's never been a missed appointment, so, um, I, I think you've got, uh, uh. You know, they've won the bid, but I think responsiveness, you know, may not have been measured, but I, I, I have. A good feeling about that, so you won't get that phone call or, you know.
Yeah, years ago, I used to help form this.
Yep.
And I, I know the owner and Steve, so they, they will have a good relationship.
That's all, sure.
One quick question, do we keep our tanks like at a certain point, like when they, you know how it's automatic delivery? Do we have them deliver at a hundred gallons?
No, it's, well.
We let it go down low.
Yeah, new to town. Um, that I'm aware of, so. It's gonna take them a couple to deliveries to see what the usage age between each building.
Yeah.
Um. A couple of years ago. We had several buildings run out several times. And they were on automatic, I, I was coming in on weekends so they could bring the furnaces and. Um, but the usage, that's why I'm gonna start them out to help get used to it.
Yeah.
Just so if it does run out, we don't get a charge. Um, if they do run out.
So there's no, you can't have a set point and say, all right, when it gets down to fifty, seventy five gallons, that's what we consider time to fill or half tank or.
Yeah, there's, we would have to monitor them ourselves on a weekly, daily basis, yeah. It's, it's.
But rather than run out, it'd be nice to have a plan of let's.
Oh, we have a plan, it's, they're gonna fill them and then we'll stop, I'm gonna have my crew check them.
You see what I'm saying though?
What's that?
See what I'm saying? If we don't wait till the very last minute and then they run out, if we. Say, all right, at fifty gallons or, you know, a quarter of a tank, we're gonna get. More oil, then we don't run the risk of running out.
Right, so it's gonna be their responsibility. That way they would don't get charged.
And you, okay, and you could, could you, could you tell them that, like, so when it's a quarter of a tank, we want a full tank? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And if they're in town, instead of me has a half a tank, they're, they're not gonna. Not top that one off and just do that one.
Okay.
I'm saying.
Okay.
Gonna make it worth their while.
Okay.
It's a shame we couldn't keep it local, but it's a big process.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Say that for, uh, for Templeton businesses.
The process as described is the industry standard.
Yep.
You know, you, even at your own home, if you change the vendor, the first couple of months, they're figuring out where things are going. What's the efficiency of your equipment? What are the heating degree days? How is mother nature treating us? There are a lot of factors that roll into that.
All the villains, no villains, it's, it's a. The roller coaster.
We're doing all of the, the plus ups and the, the green community work and that, that's all.
Yeah, we're improving, our service last year that we had was great.
We will see some dividends from those, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I hope so.
Mister Chair.
Mister Weiss.
I move to award the contract for the number two heating oil contract to the apparent lowest, lowest bidder, Freda Selly Oil and Propane. And for the town administrator to sign the contract.
Second to that motion.
Of the motion, I second. For the number two heating oil bid contract award. Any further questions or discussions, team? We've got a pretty. Short but robust cross feed of information then. Bring this to the vote, Mister Bennett?
Yes.
Miss Griffiths?
Yes.
Mister Richard?
Yes.
Mister Curry?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Up next, item five J Juliet Laurelview Road. We have a large contingent here from Laurelview, so thank you all for coming.
I was just gonna repeat what you sent to me. So we're almost there. We just got a few more steps left to, um, have Laurelview go to the town vote. Um. To be accepted and. This first step is up to you. Um, to vote. Let me see, it's kinda small, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam. Oh, by the way, I'm Colleen Fay from Laurelview.
Thank you.
Sorry. I just, well. I, I'm more familiar with, but, yeah. Sorry, so, um, so we're almost there. And, um, so this next step is for you to vote for your attention to lay out the way and for the planning, we refer. Laurelview as built plan. To the planning board for its report. Um, everything else. One of the things that were voted on in May was additional funding to look at the as-built plans, the town council and everything. And he's come back and given Adam the okay. That, um, that it looks good, that the road is built fine. Um, and now we're just going through the final legal pieces. Um, before we can put it on warrant for the May report. We were hoping to have it on November, but because of. Um. Timing the town, the planning board has forty five days to report back to us. Um. And then the. It'll be up to the select board at another meeting after that, once the planning board reports its. Layout to you, um. That you will notify all the abutters. Which is mostly the residents of Laurelview of your intention on taking the road. Um, and then. It will go to town vote hopefully in May. We were hoping for November, but too much time to dot all the i's and cross the t's. So I'm hoping with this last, you've been with us since the beginning when. You, um. Accepted our petition to go to the planning board to accept the road, um. As it is. And. Now we're wrapping it up.
Thank you.
Uh, so this. This took, uh, seventeen years, I believe, right? Seventeen years. Town council, we have the as-built plans right here. Lori's keeping an eye on it, she wants them back. These are the as-built plans, um, town council has reviewed them. Good news, the road's in the right place, no issues there whatsoever. Um, this is the first step of the, the process as Colleen mentioned, you have the memo from our attorney. Um, in your, um. Packet. Um, so this is a significant, um, move, uh. Way we're gonna proceed forward. Unfortunately, due to the timing and the process, it needs to take place, the final legal steps. Um, it won't make the fall town meeting. Um, we're, we're, we believe that will be on the annual town meeting for the acceptance of, uh. Laurelview Road, so with that, um, you have your. As-built plans, if you wanna refer to them, they're right here.
Uh, I think, Adam, you should mention too that the original engineer took part in. Approving and. Reviewing.
As proud, okay.
Yeah, the engineer was involved.
Yes.
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 Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, um. Positive stuff, um, I'm sure the neighbors of, of Laurelview are very happy and, um. Uh, the select board will start the process. Any questions, uh, Colleen's here, so, how many neighbors you got here?
Might have do.
I'm, I'm logged in if we wanna show the, uh, the, the. The plans that he's talking about at all, if anyone, all right, I'll bring him up. Could you give me sharing?
Oh, oh.
Oh, yeah. You should be.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. I started on page three because that's basically starts with Howardston Road. This is, you know, not really technical, but at least kind of shows the, 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 the audience, um, that has built plans. It's the bottom portion. Anything in particular?
Nope, thank you for that, yeah, the, the order they were in our package, it's, I feel like how you did this coming in off Howardston Road. If anybody has never been there, it's one large continuous loop. With a single entrance and exit in and out.
I think it's important to note, the, the select board did take priority, um, and they, they were supportive of the money allocated. For town council to review the title and the plans and everything like that, so, um, it's really. Board that allow, you know, brought it to, because whatever reason, whatever happened back in two thousand five. Someone dropped the ball and, you know, we're not gonna place blame on anybody, but this board, um, certainly supported this initiative and, um. That's what brought us here today.
Yep.
And I wanted to, Mr. Chair.
No, you're.
Thank you for that.
Mister Chairman. I move that the select board has the intention to lay out the way and refer the Laurelview Road as-built. Plan to the Templeton Planning Board for its report. Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion, team?
Just one, Bob, was, was this as-built with your recommendations? I remember you were saying that.
I really didn't see the plan at all. The planning board and the select board and Laurie were. I actually didn't get to view the plan.
Okay. But once it's done, it'll be, you know, plowable?
Well, if the vote is in the spring, it's. I mean, it's in disarray, yeah, we're gonna continue the services unless something drastic happens, I'll tell you.
And I think, I, I think they all knew that when we had the initial discussions, I mean, I remember the, the meeting when there were people si- sitting on the floor. We had everybody here.
Yeah.
And there was, everyone acknowledged, um, the shape it was in and the difficulty, and it wasn't going to be a, you know, snap your fingers kind of thing, but. Yeah, this is the right way to go. Um, it's, it, it is, it's tough from Bob's perspective, but we're, we're headed in the right direction, we just gotta be able to provide in. With the resources to be able to do it.
Thank you.
Any other comments, discussions? It's certainly been a lengthy process, we're bringing it close to the finish line, uh, we just need to get that last little nugget and push it. Okay, team for the vote, Mister Bennett.
Yes.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Perry.
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Keep up the good fight, you're almost there.
That's, that's pretty powerful, that's very powerful, yep.
Thank you, yeah, it looks, it looks like a great neighborhood to live in, I'll tell you that much, and he holds for sale out there.
I think you should, because he hasn't seen it.
Bob, you don't want to?
Uh, we did at the beginning, I had requested. We didn't do it, no, it was before, it was before the meeting. We could maybe just do it at the end, I think, uh, you could actually do that and add, you know, my request, that would be fine.
Action, item K, we're getting there, team. Accept donations for the scoreboard and the batting cage at Gilman Weight Field.
I guess Candy, are you doing this one or?
Oh, I can do it.
Do you want to come up too?
Yes. We're here to represent, we're representing the Lions Club. Myself and, and Richard Codis. When we originally talked about the batting cage, I'm sorry. Um, when we originally talked about the batting cage, um, earlier this year, we were asked to present a letter. When, um, things were on, on the move to, um, for the donation.
Thank you.
So I saw it on the agenda, so we decided to, uh, it was time for us to write a letter. Um, for the past twenty-two years, we have held our annual charity golf tournament. For each year, we select organizations, other clubs and town services as recipients. From money raised at our events, in twenty twenty, the recipient of the Templeton Annual Charity Golf Tournament. Was the Gilman Weight Fund. Field fund, um, as we all know, COVID stopped school sports for a, a time and delayed projects. Our lion, Richard Codis. Led the project and together with Brad Bond and Mickey Kirby, they determined the best use of the funds. They decided the batting cage destroyed by years of use and weather was the best choice. Lion Richard Codis researched the batting cages to find a quality cage and one that could. Be removed at the end of the season and stored inside, protecting it from the winter weather. The cage is here awaiting installation along with the scoreboard. Um, at this time, we respectfully request the select ward on behalf of Gilman Weight Field and the town youth. Accept the batting cage as a donation from the Templeton Lions Club. And I don't, I don't have any information on the, um, scoreboard, any of this, that's, that was a donation from another.
It's in the trailer up at the field, you've seen the trailer.
Yeah, that was already loaded on.
Richard has a picture of the batting cage.
In the trailer.
It's just a rough idea or whatever.
There's instructions, uh, how to set it up and move it and stuff, so, for the winter.
It's all. It's all donation, it doesn't. Procurement considerations or anything, right?
No, the donations were, it's just a matter of legality, but that's kind of like if they accept it, we noticed, uh, could you accept the scoreboard? Um, but there's some, uh, like the batting cage and all those. Yeah, we're gonna need those for the record. You don't need these, right?
No.
Okay.
No.
In the minutes. You need your notes off. That was a dropping list.
We're gonna get a copy of this before you leave tonight? Yes, for, for record.
I'm pretty sure we already sent this to the town, this, this thing, I don't know where it is, but I get you another one, this is fine.
I know, uh, Richard has been working also with, um.
Brad Bond.
No, but, um, but for the lighting.
Brian Pierce, Andy Parker, Dakota, Bradley Bond. Andy Woodford, Tom Dale, Bob Sosik and Tom Berry.
That's probably not exactly what it's gonna look like, because we were researching two or three other places. And the one we've got is actually better than that one, or just about the same price.
So exciting, I'm happy for them.
And it's gonna be, if, as far as where it's gonna be put, it's, we've already got the location. It'll be on the first base side of the, of the ball field, behind the, uh, visitors. The visitor dugout.
Placement, because that's the next item.
What's that? The old batting cage was on the, uh, third by, base side behind the dugout. But they had put some new septic system or something in there, so we didn't want to put it there again. Case for some reason that had to get opened up or, or whatever they, so we put it on the other side, which is, and the scoreboard is gonna be a little bit further down the field. So it can be seen by everybody on both sides.
Mister Chairman. I move to accept the listed donations from A and M Equipment Services Incorporated, Templeton Lions Club. Narragansett Athletic Department, Graves Concrete and Construction. Templeton DPW and Templeton Light and Water as presented.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Here again, it proves the old adage, it takes a village.
Absolutely.
And this is awesome to see the village coming together to do everything and for the benefit of everybody within the community.
Kids appreciate it because they, they missed it last year, last couple of years. And, uh, they really enjoyed that when they had it. Uh, they'd warm up before the games and stuff, and it's like facing live pitching, you don't have to chase the ball down the outfield somewhere, so it's great. Thank you.
Team, any further questions, discussions?
Mister Chair, I'm not sure Candy has anything further to add on this.
Brett's department's been waiting for a long time to have this, to have it come. Um, I mean, can't wait for it.
You guys are building a great collaboration. These batting cages, it's really nice, thank you so much.
That's what the Lions do, they do things for the community. Truly.
Good plug, Tim.
And no, full disclosure, I am not a member of.
But you can be, we'd love to have you.
They have applications in their folder.
This year's donation went to, uh, to, into, two groups, went to the Boy Scouts. Um, Troop Twenty-Seven. And the other portion went, we have so much we allocate every year. And, um, the other amount went to the, um. Baldwinville American Legions for the, uh, Out of Reach Program. And the year before, it was Fire Department.
Very nice, wow.
Hearing no further comments, discussions, we'll bring this to a vote, Mister Bennett, yes?
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Perry.
Yes, I vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Right behind it, action, item L, placement of the scoreboard, batting cage at Gilman Weight Field.
Mister Chair. Right now, with the absence of Parks Commissioners, the select board takes this.
Nice.
Has to decide ultimately on the grounds of the placement of such, uh, whether it be the score, scoreboard or the batting cage. Um, once that special legislation passes, though, that will go over to the Parks and Recreation Commission, but for the time being. Um, you, you still accept the donation for the placement of the scoreboard, this will be just until. That moves over to the Parks and Rec, but this is relative to the scoreboard and batting cages, batting cage at Gilman Weight. Candy, if you could come up with this one, I know you were involved. I'm on this, um, but the board does have the, the map in their packet. Um, and that's all I really have, Mister Chair, if you have anything further, I think Candy could.
No, that.
Been working on this quite a bit, so.
That, that was a good explanation, procedurally, until that special legit- legislation is approved and comes back to us. The board is the custodians of town property, so this is just the formality and dotting the i's and crossing the t's and doing this correctly.
Yeah, so they, they came down there, we all came down there, everybody looked at it, the school, the electricians, everybody decide where everything would go. And they found the best places where they felt like it should go, so the batting cage, um. I don't know if it's still gonna be the visitor's side, because if I was the home team, I'd wanna be with the batting cages on that side, but. It, it, it's because the way that the electricity is gonna go down for the scoreboard, that's why the placement of the batting cage will be, it'll be right behind. That, um, what they call the visitors', um, dugout. And then it'll follow the line where the, um, scoreboard will go, so that everybody can see for where it is that they've decided. Um, the best placement for it, I think it looks pretty good what they've picked. And, uh, um, Mark for the DPW came down, um, to represent for Bob and. They all talked and they thought everything would be good, so. And everybody from the rec department thought this is great, we can't wait until every, especially we have a soccer team, I mean softball team, so our softball team. Hopefully we'll be able to use it for our, for our major league too, so that'll be in new tournaments and. I guess it's a, the scoreboard is like a rope, remote control type of thing. It's kind of cool.
Mister Chair, we're trying to synchronize, coordinate two jobs together, so when Gray's coming to gone, they're only calling once, not multiple calls.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
That makes perfect sense.
Yeah, so everything should be done, and the electrician is gonna do their thing too at the same time. I think what are we waiting for, what we'll have left is what the steel, is that what we're waiting for? For the, for the scoreboard. Yeah. Laughing, I just love your enthusiasm, I just noticed your sweatshirt says, yeah, I told you. Yeah, movies covered.
Mister Chairman. I move to have the scoreboard and batting cage placed at Gilman Weight Field as presented.
Second.
Motion duly made and seconded, any further discussion or comments, team?
Thanks, Candy.
I could not pull up the PDF, PDF of it. Quickly, I was gonna put it up on the screen for the, the public to see it, but, uh, if people want to see the layout, it's in the agenda packet.
Second call, some answers or discussions? Uh, you have it coming up now? Yeah. Yeah, we don't need to show it, okay. Let's bring this to the vote, Mister Bennett.
Yes.
Mister Griffiths.
Yes.
Yes.
Mister Perry.
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item M, discretion regarding public records access guidelines. So we have the draft in our package for this. And this is per the.
This, this is for, by you, Mister Chair?
Yep.
This is for, um, to add a light and water records access officer. Right now, I'm the designated for the entire town. But I, I can't get access to their records over at Light and Water, so it makes sense to put the general manager as the records access officer. So that's, that's the. The addition on our guidelines.
Did he accept?
Uh, well, the board would vote on the guidelines, then it would be set. Because if somebody does a public records request and I can't get those records, then I'm held responsible, as it is right now.
Is it different for the police department and maybe? They do.
Everybody calls under me except for. The NRSD and money tech.
So you have to go by, but how do you go with the police, they have guidelines of their own things, they can't let go.
There's a public records request from the police department. I would send that over to the chief. Chief would provide me the records.
What if there's a thing that they can't do, then why do we know him?
Yeah, sorry, Terry.
I thought they have things that they can't release.
Well, I mean, it's if somebody does a public records request, Terry, if somebody was up to the police station, wants to talk with the chief or get a report or whatever, that's a different story. But if a public records request comes in, then I would be the one handling that. And there's certain guidelines that need to be followed. And I have so many days to respond, so many days to do this. And I have so many days to respond, so many days to do this.
Yeah.
Just a matter of access to records.
Yeah.
Mister Chairman, may I? So currently. What is in place if you want to receive? Rec, public records from the water and light company.
Somebody were to send me a records request?
Or if they were to send it to them, they must have something already in place. Why is this coming into a few rotation as my question?
We had an issue where it it became a problem because. Somebody sent the letter. An individual and. Sent to. The light and water and sent to me. I replied with the records we have. And I was under the assumption that they applied. Uh that they, excuse me, that they provided the records and it wasn't the case, and I received an appeal. From the Secretary of Commonwealth.
Okay.
But then I followed up with Mister Driscoll who provided the records and we were able to get those records to the individual. I just don't like being in that predicament.
Right.
Me. You know, I'm held responsible for something that I can't provide records for um until uh.
And he had no problem releasing those records, correct?
He did get this record.
Yeah.
Yes.
This is updating our own guidelines and it's adding information to further. Uh to further serve the public.
Right.
Correct.
And this is a situation that's actually, last week I was on a civics plus webinar that was Massachusetts specifically. But they're an organization out of Atlanta, Georgia, and one of the major universities, this is a problem across the nation when people request public records with multiple departments, multiple agencies and. Without a designated RAO, it puts everybody kind of in that bad, like this is just again procedural, getting it the way it's supposed to be. And it it doesn't matter, it was a mistake, we found the mistake, let's fix the mistake, let's move it up.
And my point is, is there any other offices in town that need to be put on the list, there, you know?
No. No, because most town departments and offices fall under the auspices of our town administrator.
Okay.
And it is because we have the separate. Uh Commissioners for Light and Water and then NRSD is marching to their own drum and their own sheet of music on this as an outside entity.
Are you good?
My detective is just as well.
Okay. Okay.
Did that explain it for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything to add?
All set?
Mister Chair, I move to approve the public records guidelines as presented.
Second. Motion duly made and seconded. To approve the public records guidelines as presented, any further discussions, team? Second call, any further discussions? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote, Mister Bennett.
Yes.
Miss Griffiths?
Yes.
Mister Richard?
Yes.
Mister Curry?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, team. Moving right along, action item five, general release, fifty nine Brooks Village Road.
Mister Chair, I'm accusing myself from this agenda item five O as an olive, I am a direct butter, I'll abstain and refrain. Five O, oh, five N, one minute, five. Five N, I'm sorry.
It changed.
Five N as in November. As I am a direct butter, I will abstain and refrain from comment.
Thank you for that. Full disclosure.
Mister Chair. I have reviewed the attached letter from Mister Lutzberg. And I offer the following comments. In my opinion, while the town was attempting to come to an arrangement with Mister Lutzberg in the hopes of avoiding litigation. We're not able to do so. There is no oral or written agreement in place. And Mister Lutzberg was not instructed to do by anyone to do any work. It is also my opinion that because Mister Lutzberg now seeks reimbursement in the amount of seventeen thousand eight fifty six sixty. This matter should should be treated more formally as potential litigation. Therefore, if you wish to discuss it. I suggest you schedule an executive session at a future meeting. Those, all the comments I will have, Mister Chair.
Thank you for that.
You know, obviously, you see Mister Lutzberg is here.
Yes, Mister Lutzberg is here. Yes, would you come up to the front, Mister Lutzberg?
My first uh. I first came to Mister LaMontaigne, uh I wrote him a letter actually in. January twenty seventh of two thousand twenty one. Uh this has to do with an issue that has been perpetual. And it's been per- perpetual damage to my property since. I've owned the property almost. Uh originally. My driveway would become flooded. And I would call the town DPW and they would respond. And. In the early two thousands, it was a collapsed culvert under the road. And so those two pipes there corrugated metal. And uh it took about ten years from the first time I was flooded. Until the town finally dug up the road and replaced those culvert pipes with plastic pipes. And so from that point, actually in two thousand twelve, I believe the response was because. We had a flood in two thousand twelve, I have pictures of it, I'm not sure if you have those in.
We did, we got that entire packet that you had asked to give to us, we have it.
Great, okay, so you'll see that that's a two thousand and twelve photo of the flood that I have captured. I've, I can't count how many times I've had to park my vehicle across the road, so public couldn't traverse through that flood. There are many other times that have been flooded over because the culvert pipes are clogged. And in the early uh days uh before uh Mister Zosik was the DPW Director. There was an interim period where between when uh. Bud Chase was the DPW Director and he became the DPW Director. That after the repair, we looked pretty good. And then somewhere in the last five years, there's been. Four issues, real, three issues. The the fourth one came up while discussing with uh Mister LaMontaigne. The uh three issues that relate to this is, I would like the town to take responsibility. For the out of control beaver issue. Which is happening to their culvert pipes, it's happening to my property, it's happening to property across the street, it's happening to property. On Ridgewood Terrace and it's happening to property on Drury Lane and it's happening to property down in uh. On Pondview uh Pondview. Road or whatever it's called. And these are all affected properties. And when I called the town, and I originally I was referred to call the the Board of Health. And I was told, well, I could hire a trapper. And I'm not willing to assume a beaver responsibility for the town. When all these properties are being affected, I think the town needs to take control of that issue. That's one point. Second point is when that, I don't know how the culvert pipes were before they installed them, uh before they put the new ones in. I don't know how the old ones sloped, but in my packet, you'll see that the trout brook. Um flow is blocked by the culverts. What happens is the pipes are sloped up on the downward flow of the the brook. I have a picture there that shows the the inlet side underwater. And the outlet side totally without water. Meaning the water is being trapped on my side, that outlet side should be dropped, it should, the elevation should be should be lowered. So what happens if I I have standing water there, instead of a brook, I have a pond. And in the early days in the two thousands, I remember there used to be banks of trout brook. And the brook mostly stayed in there unless the, there was a beaver issue or a, like I said, the collapsed culvert pipe. In discussing this with Mister LaMontaigne, he actually was very generous with his time, he came down and took a look. I showed him how my driveway has been sinking. In the last uh five years accelerated. And this is right at, right in coinciding with the beaver uptick. But also. In response to that, uh he had Mister Sosik come down and take a look too. And uh later on I heard uh that they used a consultant. To bounce the idea off of what was going on with the driveway. They blamed my driveway. So what they told me was, and what what the consultant that they had told me was. The DPW foreman Mark brought brought him over to a section on my driveway that had a a hole in it about the size of uh. Maybe a a silver dollar. But you could see there was a void there. He pointed to that and said, they believe that there was a culvert pipe under that was collapsed. And so therefore my fault that the driveway is collapsing. Now, when I. Showed them where the culvert, the, actually, I don't even have a culvert pipe, I had a drain pipe under my driveway, it was put there. For an equalize, it's an equalizing pipe, this is what's, this is what the function is. If there is an overflow of trout brook. Then it allows the water to go from one side of the driveway to the other without topping over and rushing over and eating away the asphalt. And it's intended so that the water, it's it's a non uh directional flow. So the water can go back towards trout brook. In like a reasonable amount of time, and I'm talking about if the culvert pipe under the road is clogged and they clear it out, the water will go back and go forth. That's great. But they're telling me that. My culvert pipe. Must have a hole in it or must be collapsed as a reason that there's a sinking of my driveway. So I've already repaired this driveway in the two thousand three. We'll call it. I've already had to do all the work because of that collapsed trout culvert pipe to begin with, because it wasn't, it wasn't traversable, I couldn't get out there, I couldn't. I actually had to go to my mailbox many times with fisherman's weighters on. Now I have an elderly mother-in-law that lives with us, I've had to move her out of there. Uh during the reconstruction that we just had, so we could redo the driveway, this the second time, the first time it was part of a a larger. Uh project where we did a general. Improvement. And so we addressed the culvert. And the uh the driveway affected by the culvert in that two thousand and three, and so that was a quarter of that price back then, probably about five thousand dollars worth of it was just that location. So all the, fast forward through these years and they finally replaced that pipe in two thousand and twelve. I'm hearing now, after being flooded over since then, I've been flooded over many times, many years, the picture you have there, I think is from two thousand and nineteen. After they replaced the pipes, but I've had many between two thousand and twelve and then, that just happens to be the picture I have on file. And um when I've been. Plowing that driveway in the last five years, I've noticed a sinking. And the trenching. And that's one of that picture, that picture that I showed you is just one of those many times. And uh the response to the DPW and and uh my letter finally to Adam. Was that I wanted the town to take some responsibility there because this is a perpetual issue. And it's always going to affect my driveway. This repair came up to seventeen thousand dollars, now I understand Mister Lam Hane, Mister Montaigne is. Talking about how the high cost is. But the reason it's that cost is because the town did not accept my offer. I asked them to take some responsibility and I wanted them to just level it. I just wanted the DPW to come in. Take responsibility, just go over the driveway, no digging, no excavating, just go over it. But they insisted that I had to excavate my equalizing pipe, my drain pipe. Because they claimed that that was the fault of the driveway. That equalizing pipe was thirty five feet away, forty feet. Away from the spot that they were showing that consultant of where there must be a collapsed culvert pipe. Now, because they would not take any responsibility to take this to the board. They forced me, they forced me. To excavate my pipe in order to bring this to the board, they would not bring this to the board unless I excavated my pipe. So what I had to do was I had to hire a fellow named Jim Kropalaski. He's got this excavator, in order to get his excavator in there, we had to drop the cable and power line, move him over. At a, at a cost of a thousand and thirty seven dollars to get the cable over and a cost of six hundred and sixty six dollars from the power company in Templeton to get that. Uh it was a. A uh a neutral wire, a rounded neutral that had to be moved because the reach of that excavator to excavate down to where they were saying there was a culvert pipe that must be collapsed. Was going to be right directly under those wires. So in order to get all that fit in there and get all the equipment in there and get the digging done, I had to comply. In order just to get this matter to be brought to the board. That costs an extra sixty five hundred dollars of that excavator, just him alone. So knock that seventeen thousand dollars down to what it could have been. When I was getting priced on just getting the driveway level. I got estimates and the the low one was eighty two hundred dollars and the high one was thirteen thousand dollars. There was two others that came in almost exactly the same at ninety six hundred dollars, so that's the cost, that's the cost it would have been. Just to do that. But because of the cable, because that excavator had to be in there. Instead of just putting pavement in there, we had to all do all that digging, those wires had to be moved, so yes, that added another. Whatever the math is, sixteen hundred dollars, seventeen hundred dollars to that project. But the reason I'm up to seventeen hundred, seventeen thousand dollars because of the assistance of Mister LaMontaigne and Bob Sosik, the director. Because they claimed that I had a collapsed culvert pipe, which I didn't even have a culvert culvert pipe. All that pipe that I have, that's a drain pipe, which was functioning properly, by the way, and you can tell, because anytime there was ponding. The water would rise up one side of the driveway and equalize on the other side, and you could see that was happening. Before it was over the driveway. I'm not always down at the driveway when this is happening, sometimes somebody reports to me, hey, your driveway is underwater again. And I call the DPW. They've been very responsive since two thousand twenty one uh after Adam got involved. And uh. The DPW came down and actually put a grate system. In front of that culvert pipe. In order to, the culvert pipe under the road, in order to catch whatever debris was clogging their pipes, because this has happened so repeatedly. Even though they've been responsive, uh quite responsive since then. Um that grate system just made the problem worse. What happened was, the grate system acted like a screen, if anybody put a filter in anywhere, they know that a filter catches stuff. Well, that's what this grate system did. And so what it forced it to do is a four foot grate system, I believe, maybe five feet, but it was at least four feet. And it caught, and you see that in your pictures there somewhere. And uh what happened was. As the season would go on, the grate system would. The the water against the grate system would get higher because a screen, because a screen was catching debris. And so they tried to have the foreman or other workers come down and clear out the screen every so often and, but what logistically happened there was, it caused me to have a full season of ponding. That I've never had before, for a full season, and I noticed that that collapsed that driveway became accentuated during that season. And I asked uh what what to do, I mean, I asked the DPW Director. Who's going to pay for my repair? And he referred, he deferred me to talk to Mister LaMontaigne, and Mister LaMontaigne told me he's a good listener, and he definitely is. But his approach now saying that he wants you to take this in an executive session, instead of, and making it a legit, a litigious matter. Instead of just trying to do a release here where I get some reimbursement from the town to help me. Because it says twice now, first time was five thousand dollars in that section, and this time it would have been nine thousand dollars. But except for them forcing me to excavate that and lower and move the wires and all that. So I'm I'm I'm. I'm challenging. His version of how this developed. And I am insisting that the town can consider some type of compensation, but beyond this. There is still that beaver issue that I'd like the town to take some responsibility on. Because again, it's a town issue, I called down to the state, talked to a fellow named Dave Waddle, he's the uh wildlife uh. Policeman or whatever he is, and uh he told me this is a town issue. Now, how the town handles is it, is what the town decides, I guess. I called the um animal control officer, turns out she's from Winchandon. Um and when she came down, she told me she's just in charge of kitty cats and puppy dogs. I've been, I'm, I know that if there was a bear on the property, somebody would be down, they'd remove it. Or something like that, but I don't own a beaver, I never had one as a pet. And these are all over the place. And that's one issue, the second issue that I'm talking about is that culvert pipe. I've just gone through the seventeen thousand dollar expense of repairing that section of my driveway. And I've got it, what I did this time was, we dug the whole thing out. In two thousand and three, we took what the town's uh culvert pipes did to my driveway and we just re-leveled it. And we re-leveled it and paved it. And done. And so we thought we were set because once the town was going to fix that pipe, which it turned out to take another seven uh. Nine years to do. We we lucked out, there was some ponding and there was some. Rutting or whatever you want to call it, where it's this kind of slope to that one side towards the brooks, uh towards trout brook. Trout brook is eighty feet from my driveway.
Yep.
And that means I had an eighty foot pond. Through it for that whole season, and every time that. Through it for that whole season, and every time that we've had these floods, I've had ponding and up and over my driveway, and the town responds pretty fast when I block off the road because it's going over the road and you see the pictures there. Of it flooding over the road. That I can't count how many times it was because I really don't know. You might be able to get pick that up when talking to the dispatch for Templeton because I called it in so many times.
Right.
I've had the town, uh the girl down at DPW tell me that that they've taken two truckloads of debris out of the thirty-six inch pipe that's up upstream, but still on from my property. It's it's a trial brook splits there. Goes one way and comes down here. And the the lower one has two eighteen-inch uh plastic pipes that are parallel. The other one, the other one that splits off is a thirty-six inch, a big one. I've gone in there myself and cleaned that pipe out when the DPW hasn't been responsive. And uh I believe me, when I'm in there, I can feel the thing shaking because cars are going over. But there's there's nothing else I can think to do if it's the response is too slow. Because what would happen is that's Betty Pond above there, and you would have to block off the flow to the larger outlet and send all that water down to the smaller outlet because that culvert pipe's not maintained. And or it's got sudden beaver debris clogged in it. Now, when Mr. Sosik came down and he looked at that. What he told the driveway, he looked at that, he said, before my time, and actually Adam said the same thing, before my time. That culvert pipe should have the culvert pipes that go under that section eighty feet from my driveway should have been a boxed culvert. I never really thought about that before, but as soon as he said it, it made sense. Yes, because it's more, it's not a bridge. Because that would be way more expensive, but it's a culvert that's got a design that doesn't trap and close trial brook. It lets trial brook flow. Right now, the way you see those pitches, you see it's blocking. That's without flow. And the minute we start having spring runoff, and this is what happens every spring or most springs, if we have a significant regular season. Once they have the snow melt and things stop flowing out of both sections of trial brook under under the thirty-six inch pipe and then these two eighteen-inch pipes. By the way, two eighteen-inch pipes are not equivalent to a thirty-six inch pipe. That box culvert would do the job at the lower pipe. But beyond the not being sized correctly and should be a box culvert, it's pitched upwards. So that has to be addressed. Now, I've done all this work. And I have no assurances from town that they're going to fix that culvert pipe. They're going to do anything about it. I've already done the response, the response that on my end so that I can get reversible out there and plow it twice now. I've patched it all along as it's been sinking and doing puzzle cracking. And I've had managed to hold it together those two out of the last three years, and now finally just got to where I couldn't trust it for another season. So we had to give a go to have a contract to come in there during the dry season. Because boy, once you get into the fall, that water starts flowing again and it was being trapped. We can't do anything about excavating. So we had to take that action now. So we had no choice but to proceed forward, but I wanted the DPW to do. And I asked them starting in uh well, I actually asked them starting in January twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-one. But when Adam and uh Bob came out, it was this season after I was, you know, after a string of letters, I sent those letters, then I followed with emails. And I mentioned that there is some authority from the DCR under Massachusetts general law that allows the commissioner to assess damages against the town to cover my total expenses and not just now, but prior. Going back to the original damages. All I ever wanted was the town to take responsibility on this one to just level it. But they required me to do that, all of that extra work, just so we could sit here in front of it, you guys, and have me present it. And it wouldn't be allowed otherwise. So that's that's my side of the story. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Oh, I um I don't have any. So I I heard what 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 Adam said uh in terms of decision-making process. I know that the board had some process for this um whether, you know, um I need, I needed facts. I know there's a lot of material in our in our packet, a lot of uh emails back and forth.
Yep.
Um and um you know, the pictures, Bob, did you happen to see? I I'm I I don't, I don't, I'm not going to ask him questions. As you said, did you happen to see the the the, it was like a twelve megabyte packet with pictures at the end? Did you happen to see that? Like, he referred to, um, do you do you mind if I call you Dave?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, uh he had pictures of flooding, so the some of the things that he was talking about, I was just wondering if you had seen.
Yeah.
Okay. So I needed, I needed facts to understand this. I, you did a great job, um, very respectful. I I un- unbelievable job of of getting me there. May I ask the question? I really want to ask the question in terms of fact gathering. Does the town agree with the uh collectively, do we agree with how uh Dave just laid laid it out? Can I ask that question? I know that Adam had a consideration in terms of we're trying to collect facts and we're trying to figure out, you know, how to move forward. And I'd like to be able to do it equitably, but I also know that there are processes out of the words. I have not been, we have not been able to talk to 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 Bob or otherwise, but I I want to make sure that we're processing through. But I would like to figure out an equitable solution so not everyone's lawyering up. If that's uh be- because no one wins at that point. But again, it's about collecting facts and otherwise to be able to get through that. So I really want to say Mr. Chair, what are we prepared to tonight now that Davis laid out all of the the information? Do we want to proceed with the uh continued fact finding or do we want to? I mean, there's no suggested motion.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I I agree with Adam. It's a lot of information, a lot of emails, a lot of pictures. Thank you. As a board, you need to take the time to look at it and discuss it, accomplish yourself.
Yep.
And then move on from there.
Okay, I agree with that. Okay. I I what I actually would have suggested it.
Yeah.
Because that packet you have, I just actually got that to Adam this morning because I thought maybe it'd be helpful to the board. That's all. There was emails and there was letters, and you don't even have the letters in front of you, I don't think.
Right.
We have, we have a lot. But I refer to them in that packet, so.
Yeah, we have a lot of information here, but sure, agreed, but we got this this morning and this was, this was a lot to digest.
It was a lot for me to prepare. I'm legally blind. I can't read the packet I brought you.
Okay.
I can see it on my computer and that's the best I can do.
So what I I thought was very helpful was to understand the north-south culverts. Because I'm thinking now as a as a map, the north-south culverts underneath um Brooks Village Road. It's supposed to channel water. And then you refer to the drainage pipe, which is a smaller pipe that the, I'm sorry, the leveling pipe.
That's right.
As an east-west running um.
It's east west.
East-west run.
And you can have it, by the way, if you want. It'll it'll still function. It was functioning when I took it out. It'll still function. It didn't have a hole in it. Like they were suspecting, and it was forty feet away from the spot they were talking about.
Definitely agree that we need to kind of.
Matter of fact, that picture I have, there is a picture there that shows the excavator. And if you look at that from the view that I'm showing you. There's a cut right where his big truck is hanging off this edge of that thing. They dug down four feet there. And that that dig is right where the town claimed I had a culvert pipe under there that was must be collapsed. There was nothing there except for uh gravel and uh pavement. The pavement just had a void under it that made it a pothole. And that's why they thought, that's why the consultant that I talked to that they had, his name is Gary Young. He said he wished he had known that the town would have told him that my drain pipe was further down. And he was the one, and he was shown by the foreman that location as the as the cul- as the culprit. And he said he wished he would have had that conversation with me before he went down to look at that or that I had been told to be available to him down there. And he would have had a different entirely different opinion that he gave Mr. Sosik in his office. I don't think Mr. Sosik met him at the driveway. I think Mr. Young said he met the foreman. But I did meet with Mr. Sosik at the driveway along with Adam on the second visit of Adam.
Mm-hmm.
So but that that that's an issue all by itself because Mr. Young didn't know the history of the driveway, how it was reconstructed back in two thousand and three. It had, I had loads of bank run gravel brought in there and and compacted for a a hundred or two hundred foot section. Because that's the section that was, when it gets panted over there, even though it's eighty feet away. It gets panted for a hundred and eighty feet laterally of the driveway. So when it gets to that side and stays there long enough, and you've got vehicles coming in, trucks coming in and out. It, you can take any soil you wish to and mound it and compact it, and it's just like a pitcher's mound, it will stay tough. But you put that thing in an amount of water. And you could step on it, or you put weight on it, that thing's going to squish. And that's what's been happening down there. My driveway's been squishing when during this process all the time. I was glad that it lasted as long as I did, but now I've got this new one in. And I wouldn't have had to do that because I still have another portion of my driveway that's closer to my house, the last we'll say three hundred feet that I don't, I won't have to, four hundred feet. That I won't have to touch for another twenty years because it's, it was put in the same time as this one, but it didn't have this effect. Didn't have this pounding effect. And I can just take care of that with sealer and a crack filler and as we go. So there's no problem there. That one there at the end of the driveway, I had to do because a matter of safety, just getting in and out. And now that we've got my elderly mother-in-law, I just couldn't, I shouldn't, couldn't delay it. And so.
So that that that's my concern, at least for this evening. I think if we pull back, try and ascertain facts, timelines or otherwise. I realize that there's been um actions on both parts and um I realize that, but is there any anything that is unsafe right now? I know that, I know that there was action taken. I know I saw the pavement or otherwise.
Well, I will tell you, I'm still working on that driveway, even though I've had a contractor come in and do these at these costs. I still have to do all the final work, which is I have to uh pack the edges. Because right now you've got a lifted asphalt and then there's nothing. You know, it's like a, it's like a shoulder. So I have to go along with some more compacted gravel or uh some um crushed uh stone. And kind of get that up to the same level as the asphalt. So when a tie hits that, they won't pull them right into the
Yeah.
Off the edge of the driveway there, because now that's a mound that's going through there.
Right.
Now it's a nice compacted mound, it's very solid, and he compacted it with a thirty thousand ton uh thirty thousand pound excavator for every layer he put in there. He dug it right out to the base so that we know exactly what's there. And we put in all stone at the bottom, two feet of stone, I mean, large stone, six to twelve, maybe even a little bit more here and there. And then went the rest of the way with bank run gravel and he compacted every section as he dumped it in there. Until he got up to the level and I made, and I actually forced that to be designed differently, tried to make it town proof. So that now I brought the level up to the level of the road. So I'm hoping that if there's never a pounding issue again, but if there is a pounding issue, it's going over the road as soon as it goes over my driveway and somebody has to respond. But I shouldn't have had to do that expense to get that done. This is just a driveway, eighty feet from trial brook. And it's not the driveway's fault that it sank.
Emergency situation or anything like that, there's going to be life-threatening.
Well, I have to do something with shoulders. That's my, that was my answer to what you, what your question is. I have to beef up the shoulders a little bit. The driveway's in, it's safe. I've kind of um put these reflectors along the edge of the asphalt so that people are aware. You know, don't go this way, that way, and just stay in the middle. It's a twelve, thirteen feet wide at the section of that entire asphalt. It's all level. So that's all, that's all good. But and I'm, I I trust we're okay. I might have put guardrails in, you know, I mean, I thought about that, but I don't know what the expense would have been, and I know I can't afford it. And I'm at a point where I can't afford to live there anymore, actually, because if this keeps happening, I'm, I don't know what I can do. I'm into my retirement savings for this project. Okay, well, anyway, for your consideration, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Uh again, there was no suggested motion. Thank you for the presentation. This definitely has got to be investigated. I I'm not in any position to even entertain a suggestion for a motion or anything.
I don't know how to present it to you.
We still need to do.
Yeah, I want to, you know, Adam, Adam's guidance, I want to state, I I wanted to hear more about it, but I, you know, I want to follow want to follow Adam's lead for how we can, um, I would like to find an equitable solution. Like I said, I don't rather so people aren't spending money to um.
Yeah, it sounded like Mr. LaMontaigne's lead was to let me sue you. That's what it sounded like to me. I'm not trying to do that. I just want the town to help with this project. I mean, I would, I would request that they help with the prior project, but I'm not. And I'd even, you know, I'd be willing to sign a release to relieve the town from all the prior damages and costs that I've incurred. Trying to keep those repaired as the driveway's been sinking. So I've I've been agreeing to do that and he originally had worked up a release for me to sign. But it was at Bob's discretion about what work was going to be done. And I said, well, what's that mean? I have to have some type of definition of what's to be done, not that he comes down with a bucket of asphalt and puts it in a patch. I couldn't, you know, I, that's what I wanted them to do.
Yeah, we've got everything.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't want to keep you any longer. I know it's late.
No, you, I, I thank you very much. You, you did a really good job of explaining it. Um, and I appreciate it.
I'm available for questions anytime somebody wants to call.
Okay.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You had a lot of detail in that.
Moving on, item five O is an Oscar. Actions regarding an MOU for rural streets program.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is uh relative to a program offered by state. Um, we have, I believe, two streets eligible for those signage improvements. Um, and this would make us, uh, believe one of them is Berry Road, uh, Lee and Lee is the other road. Where they, the state will have these consultants that go out, um, review safety improvements that can be done with signage. At particular roadways within the town. And um this will make us eligible for those improvements to be made, those um said identified streets that the state identified for the town of Templeton.
Their stuff, our work. Materials.
Yep. In a nutshell.
Correct.
Yeah.
For translation, another unfunded mandate.
Well, it's based on.
Yes.
His workout, but.
Yep, yep.
I know, I just have a question about my with, is there a time period that I should be knowing about that goes into this? I, I am the next step, so we can keep sort of us something in mind, uh, what I would expect to hear when. I apologize for interrupting, but I realize that's sort of unfinished.
Take it, you know, it's, it's an action item.
It is.
So um
I don't know what I should have requested for that time in the motion. By your process.
The the ball, you know, the the metaphor, the balls in our court. We basically said we've, we've taken all this and now the board is trying to ascertain facts, position and otherwise, so as an action item, it's basically up up to a board member or the chair to assign to basically say who's working this.
Okay, so how does that happen?
And we've got our.
Do I have to request it?
No, no, no. What do you want to work with on this?
Projecting here is like months. Next year.
Okay.
This will be us, we have a workshop coming up.
What?
Thirty days.
No later than.
Yeah, later than.
So no later than, um, Dave, I I'll, I'll take it on. You know, the board doesn't work all together when we're not in session. You know, yeah, so.
I just wanted to have some type of.
But again, I didn't want to say too much because I I really, we are in absorption mode. Um.
I'm sorry.
We've done, we've done this many times before. Um, I've been on for four years. Uh, we've had many situations all across the town trying to figure out how how to proceed through or otherwise and um I I will take it on. I will work with uh all of the stakeholders. As far as communication to you, like we were just, I don't know if you heard uh say as far as hearing back, no, no later than thirty days. Yeah, um, because we meet, we meet, we meet together twice a month. And we want to really make sure that we're um, we're providing the public, we're providing you with updates. Um, but let me, let me work with the stakeholders. Um uh, I'll actually talk with the chair about, you know, just i- is accepting a task item. I got, I got a lot of things, like, oh, Jeff, a bunch of things that I had done for the last one I'm working on. Um, but I'm familiar with trying to 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 get through uh an issue like this. Um, driveways in particular.
Something that's decided outside of the course of a regular meeting.
Absolutely not. Um, no, but we do collect the information. We do a lot of the assessment, uh, a lot of the staff work. If if I could characterize it as that, um, we didn't, you know, we didn't leave it like that, but uh I I think anyone could have walked out saying, well, it's in the board's hands, but you know, again, you have the major interest in this. Um, financially, safety, everything, but let me work on this um with the stakeholders. I don't, I just don't want to start pointing fingers or.
I just was asking for the process.
Yep, are you good with Mr. Chair?
Very.
Okay.
Very well said.
So no later than thirty days and I'm working the case.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome. Back to our region, our um. Back to our region, our, um, previously scheduled.
Yes.
So materials.
Believe we, uh.
Win-win, right?
Good, it's a good thing for the town.
Mister Chair.
Grace.
I move to approve the memorandum for understanding for the rural streets program with MassDOT as presented and for the town administrator to sign.
Second that motion.
Have a motion and a second for the MOU with MassDOT. For the rural street programs. Any further discussions or comments?
Glad I got the chance in public, we need to let Jeff know that I'm still working on. Thank you for that.
You're in his little notebook.
I am, I, that was the five-hour meeting, so we, I, I took the, uh, I took my list. And I finished my list before I went down to the hotel bar. I mean, went to sleep.
Any further comments, discussions on the MOU? Saying now, let's bring this to the vote.
Oh, he's got the vote going.
Either that's gonna feel.
I'm, I'm all set on, on the issue, so I'm a yes on the vote.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
That's Richard.
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you, Dean.
Coming down to the wire. Action five P setting the annual goal setting and retreat date.
Anyone have any suggestions for that? Date wise?
Today's the fourteenth. When's budget kickoff, Adam? Do you recall? Okay. We, we next meet on the twenty-eighth. We just wanna do an additional, um, an additional meeting. Whether, whether it's in, you know, it's in a week that we have a meeting, meet like a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, or, well, not Friday, cuz that's not a workday for us. Or for the, for the town, um, people, support staff, although it's our retreat, so minimally staffed. I'm, I'm traveling a lot the last two weeks of September, so maybe looking at the first. Week or second week of October. I, I think we gotta do it. I, I don't. Yeah, we, we can't.
Well, we have to, yeah.
And I don't wanna convert any of our meetings.
Um, I'm unavailable. The third week of October, but prior to that, up until the fourteenth, I should be fine with. Anything not told.
Tuesdays are better for me. I have teaching commitments on Monday evenings.
October four or eleven. Uh, we have, our, a meeting would be on the twelfth.
What's September twenty-seven?
Or will it be on the fourth?
I'm away, I'm away, sorry.
That's right.
Four or eleven, um.
I'm good with four. I can make four work.
Four. Four with you.
Sure.
Sounds like we have a consensus.
October fourth.
What time?
Five, five P M.
Oh, what about TCTV?
It's public meeting, but it's not, bye, Dave. Um, it's public meeting, it's not broadcasting. And, um, we, we had been doing, we've done them in, at senior center in the past.
Fire station.
Fire.
Fire station.
That was at the fire station.
We've had it at the fire station for many years. Um, I.
I don't.
Been at the.
I, I've never been.
Also been at, yeah. It's also been senior center.
What do you wanna do?
Whatever's, what's available?
October fourth, five o'clock.
Fire station.
Two, well, that's a Tuesday. Tuesday is usually fire department night, so we need to, we need to run that past the chief.
We'll just have it here.
Or here. I can't do there, here.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't wanna sit like, I don't wanna sit like this. I wanna sit around a table, that's.
Right, I mean, we could lay it out. Town accountant's office says around, you know. Oh, nothing more.
We'll figure out the particulars.
In time, five o'clock.
Yeah.
Five.
Town office. Here. We'll figure it all out. Yeah, we have a date and time.
Way to go, Justice. See what you did? It was perfect. It's all on you. Aren't you, isn't he the one that posted them?
Yeah. No, it's not.
Did a great job.
They alternate. Yeah, you got, she's not here, but we can't throw that one.
Love it.
Great, moving right along, the, uh. Agenda showed a discussion, but that was actually entered during public comment, so we're gonna skip beyond that. Julie, I believe you had a request.
I, I can actually make that official if you want. I just, I, I make a motion to, uh, pass over discussion re veteran services officer position.
Second that motion.
Motion duly made and seconded. Being no further comments or people chomping at the bit. We'll follow up to a vote, Mister Bennett.
Yes.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Curry.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you. There, we made sure we thought of the ice president.
Yep, that's what I thought.
We didn't need to make a motion like that. Goals, so.
Nope, we did not.
I would actually like to request a moment of silence for the death of the Queen. If we could do that. That would be appreciated.
We can do that, and I.
Amazing woman.
I will also ask at the same time, um, those who may or may not know, John Whipple, the son of the former police chief John Whipple. From the forties and fifties, I believe. His wife Sherry passed this past weekend. So a moment of silence for her would be appropriate as well. Thank you for that. Board member comments.
Jeff has none.
Actually, I would just like to request, um, an update at our next. Board meeting on Scout Hall, and where we are at with that, cuz I know there's a couple of different things going on with that, and I'd like to see that. Come to completion in the very near future would be great, but I would like an update on that, if you could put that on the agenda. No, that's it.
Just one more thing, anything? I have no comments. What about the CPC?
When you, when you said that, I, I didn't see anything on the agenda.
The deadline is September twenty-second. It's supposed to be voted on through the, or.
Amended agenda cuz you were worried about.
For the, for the nine, for the nine thousand and seventy-five thousand.
That'll be on the final warrant. That'll be in the front of the board on the October. Or meeting, the first, I believe it's the first October meeting. We have it in draft form. I, I received it from Mister Headshot.
Yeah, I guess we thought it was gonna be this, this, um.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure, so when you said that, I, I. Sorry. It was an entertaining evening. Thank you.
Changes my whole idea of coming to board meetings.
And there's plenty of, uh, committees too.
My sewer commission meeting's at this.
So it'll, it'll be, the final warrant will be on the October, uh, first board meeting in October, I believe.
Okay, we just.
We back to the September twenty-two. That's when, that's when they close, uh, citizen petitions.
Is that the same thing for the other one, the one we just did?
Yeah, they'll all be on. I already have the draft article, but it's in draft form until the board approves the warrant. Thank you. We're gonna go on the draft warrant, so.
We got, we got missed in the spring, so we don't wanna get missed again.
We won't.
Yeah, that's just such a bad.
We'll reach out.
Thank you.
We will make sure that you are not missed.
Thanks.
Chairman, can you make note of that?
Don't forget me.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good evening.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Motion made and duly seconded to adjourn, Mister Bennett.
Yes.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Curry.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Meeting adjourned eight fifty.